All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda for council's approval, we have the city council minutes of November 18th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of November 25th, Planning Commission minutes of November 20th, Accounts Payable report November 14 through November 26th. For council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lakes Area C V B Board minutes of October 15th, and the Human Rights Commission minutes of October 15th.
Do you approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items as presented, discussion. Councilmember Osmas.
Could I pull F, please?
Yes. Anything else? With the exception of item number F, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Osmas.
In the Human Rights Commission minutes, I saw that they had a discussion about new residents to Wilmer and if they were aware of policies and ordinances and regulations of the city. And I think they were going to check with Sarah Swedberg to see if, she apparently had worked on some type of a flyer or some information, excuse me, that could go to people. But I talked with Chief Felton, and I know that the police department did at one time have a folded, about a six or seven page, that was color-coded, and it had all the information about fireworks and lawns and garbage and parking and fire pits and animals and curfew and weapons, and it was a really nice handout to give to somebody. And I knew they used, I know they used to be at, like, at family services and apartment buildings. And I'm sure that Sarah would have been aware of that, and I don't know that it's probably been published for a while, but whoever is working on that, and I think Chief Felton said that he might connect with Sarah, but to see if maybe we could use that again, because it was, I'm sure it wouldn't need to be updated. Chief Felton does have a file from, I think, 2011, but it was a really good resource, and I think it would be, it would be worth using again, unless Sarah's happy with what she has.
Sure, sure. I know that, I know that when Megan was in planning development, that she had worked on something when I was the mayor as well. And I know, Vicki, you had something that you handed out at the coffee shop as well that was prepared, I think, by city staff. So I know there's been some pieces that have been put together along the way. Councilmember Mesky.
I was going to say, I think that the Human Rights Commission would be very happy to see that information, to build on it. I know they're talking about unveiling the entire policy over again about basically how, what's the expectations of a citizen of the city of Wilmer. That would be a great template to start from, so they don't have to reinvent it, so.
That was, that was exactly what I was thinking, and it was also translated into Somali and Spanish.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, yeah, if, if the police chief would get ahold of Sarah, or even get ahold of Shelley Hughesby, the chair of the Human Rights Commission, that would be a good step to start that. Thank you.
I just thought it might save somebody some time.
Yep.
So I'm wondering, do we want to keep this, so our two council liaisons to the Human Rights Commission are Councilmember Mesky and Councilmember Davis. So maybe, seeing this coming up at a council level, maybe we should keep it at a council level too, or how do you guys want to do it?
We can talk about it. I think just getting that in the right hands of the right people is important, and Sarah was only mentioning it to us as a Human Rights Commission, because it's, it came from that Gare work that we were working on. So it should probably come back at some point to the Human Rights Commission, but if staff can start that process, I think that's a great way to go.
Councilmember Nelson.
I believe that the chamber has a document and that they worked on that, and it's available in three different languages. It used to be on their counters out there that you could pick up, so I would suggest that we work with them also to look at what they have available, because I know that it was prepared in three different, and it almost sounds like the same thing, so who did it or whatever, but I think that's still available through them, too.
I think Mary Lee Dorn had developed it back when she was a crime prevention officer.
Right.
Okay, with that, I will move to accept the Human Rights Commission minutes of October 15th.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have city council open forum. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the council? Sir, are you here for the truth in taxation hearing?
No.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, seeing the hearing done, we'll go to the public hearing for truth in taxation. And it has in my notes, I'm to call on Steve Okens, our finance director.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, this is the culmination of all the efforts of city staff and city council committees to analyze what we expect the year 2020 to be and what our financial needs are projected to be. Mr. Okens has a PowerPoint presentation that many of you have seen before, whether at finance or at the mayor's proposed budget presentation. He'll walk you through that presentation, and then at the end of that, it would take two actions to proceed for getting our financial budget approved and our levy submitted to the county. So, Mr. Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council included in your packet, and if they could bring it up on the screens, there is a PowerPoint presentation. Part of the budget process is, the council sets a budget calendar back in September, well, actually before that. The charter requires the mayor to submit his presented proposed budget to the council by the end of September. The council then takes that proposed budget, which is a balanced budget that the mayor presented to you, and discusses it and sets a preliminary levy. That preliminary tax levy then is certified to Candy White County by the end of September, which you did. You did a slight adjustment at that meeting of about $147,000 on the preliminary levy. So the truth in taxation notices that would have went out to the public would have been based on that adjusted tax levy. And further in the presentation, I'll speak to that a little bit about what the finance committee is recommending for tonight's meeting. The council committee, finance committee then reviewed the mayor's proposed budget in the months of September and October, held a couple of meetings with the full council in November, and at their November 21st meeting, has some final recommendations that are coming before you tonight, which is the truth in taxation hearing for the council to take public testimony, and as Administrator Gromit said, to make two actions. One is to set a final levy, property tax levy, and the second would be to adopt an overall budget which include your general operating budget. The levy, as I mentioned to you in this slide, is the levy that the mayor did propose. That was a 2.6% increase on the tax rate. That, again, is not what went to the general public in their public notices, because of the finance committee setting a levy, a preliminary levy, $147,000, roughly higher than that, which would, basically would have doubled that. So with, with their notices, they will, they could take approximately 50% of what the notice tells them they're going to see in a property tax levy for a dollar amount. That amount would have been about 5.2%. Again, that was $147,000 more than what you see there of $5,776,000. The next slide gives you an example of what the recommendation coming tonight before you would have an effect on a residential home with three different values. One is approximately $140,000. We'll see a slightly over $11 increase for the city portion only. Now, the truth in taxation notice that people would have received would have been the city portion, as well as a county hearing and the school district as well. And tonight's meeting and hearing is only speaking to the city portion of that notification only. And then going up to the $344,000 home, the city portion would see roughly a 33%. And again, this is based on the final recommendation that's coming before you tonight from the November 21st meeting. This is not what they would have received on their notices.
$33, not 33%.
I'm sorry, $33, $33. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the major changes that the mayor dealt with and what we're seeing, overall budget, not so much the general operating, but the overall budget, is now that Caris Health or Rice Memorial Hospital is being leased by Caris Health. The city will be actually accounting for the debt service instead of that being accounted for through Rice Hospital. The revenues coming in is actually coming from Caris Health, but we, it's an accounting procedure that we now have to include it in our budget and not in the hospitals. The local option sales tax projects that are included in the capital improvement projected for 2020 was 9.8. The overall local option sales tax projects over the next few years is $30 million, and that is being generated by the local, one and a half cent local option sales tax. Also being proposed and discussed will be a city hall in the capital improvement of 8.5 million, and two additional positions of the assistant fire chief and the additional accounting clerk. I mentioned the November 21st finance meeting where in October, September, October, and then the two meetings in November, the finance committee along with discussions with the full council, reviewed some of the items that were included in the mayor's budget and had some adjustments that they will be recommending to you tonight, which will have, and the numbers have been adjusted to reflect these changes. One was to reduce that additional levy that was proposed at the end of September. And so the, again, the notifications to the property owners will be somewhat less than what they've received on their notification as well, and approximately 50% for the city portion only. The finance committee also recommended removing a gas franchise for this year and possibly reviewing that in the future as a possible revenue source with the Centerpoint Energy Gas Company. There were a number of, 2019 capital expenditures where there are excesses where the projects were finished and those dollars are available, and so they are proposing to use that instead of doing the gas franchise and the property tax increase. A couple of small items that the police department and fire department came in and indicated that they did not need in 2020 as well. There was a recommendation to remove money that was earmarked for an assistant administrator position, reduction in a civic request for the barn theater, and some labor adjustments. So with these recommended adjustments to the mayor's balanced budget, it would remain balanced at this point and with these recommendations. Part also discussed was one-time money that was there due to some employment changes and policy changes, which had $800,000 still available. One of the recommendations, the capital improvements, was to use some of that money instead of borrowing money and temporarily financing the Swanson Field Lights with internal dollars that had to be repaid within five years, and leaving $485,000 undesigned at this point, and would be available to be appropriated in the future for various projects. There was a discussion about the auditorium, which is listed there with a number of improvements needed. The civic center had also some insulation and other projects in the capital that were not funded with the mayor's balanced budget. Swanson Field had a number of light improvements. This would be in addition to the Swanson Field Lights, but all the softball fields as well. And the fire department had a parking lot and a couple of other smaller capital improvements that were not funded either. With that, Mr. Mayor, again, as I mentioned, this is the truth in taxation hearing. Public testimony will be taken. Citizens should have received a public notice on what the proposed taxes would be as far as their property goes. There are a number of items that could affect a person's notice if, if the property value stayed the same. Again, what they had on their notice will be slightly less for the city portion than what's on that notice due to the recommendation from the finance committee to reduce that $147,000 levy. The other portions of the county and the school district had hearings and meetings where those items were discussed as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll stay here for any questions that may come up.
Thank you for your presentation. This is a truth and taxation hearing. The public meeting has been opened, a public hearing has been opened, and is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
Yes.
Please come to the podium and state your name, and if you reside within the city or outside of the city, please.
My name is John Lenefelter. I reside within the city of Wilmer, and I am curious, one, the evaluation of my property has gone up over $10,000 in one year, which is a pretty substantial jump, and the percentage of taxable value is at 9.3%. So I'm going to be not $33, but $160 for the next year. My service, my taxes seem to be going up and up and up, and I'm needing less and less services provided to me by the city. Now, the question is, how much does an assistant administrator make that we have to fork out $150,000? Now, I understand half of that is salary and the rest is taxes, insurance and everything else, but that seems to be a very substantial amount of pay for one individual.
Okay, so I think you have two different questions. So what I'm hearing, your first question is, is that your overall taxes are going up about 9.6%?
9.3.
9.3%. And so that would be the city, the county, and the school district. And so what you need to do is you need to look, Steve, maybe you can show them where the city portion is. So the city portion is only a small percentage of that increase. You'll see that.
So the total increase, roughly $80?
Yeah, just from the city.
Yeah.
All right.
And so, and so a portion of that is, is the city portion, and then also what is being recommended to the council for consideration this evening is that they would reduce that by basically one mil, which is about $147,000, but that's spread across everybody, so you're not going to see a dramatic decrease of that 80-some dollars, you said?
It'd be about, we have some, yeah.
So, right, so you'll see a different amount. The assessing is done by Candy White County now, the city contracts with Candy White County, and so all properties within, within the city are assessed the same as they are in the entire county. And that is a benefit to you as a taxpayer, but also a benefit to us as elected officials, because then we have consistent appraisals being done across the city. And this has been, been done, I believe, somebody helped me with the number of years, is that, were we in our third year? Second or third year we're in that agreement?
Well, I would like to contest the assessment, obviously. That's a, if I can get $10,000 return on my investment, I would be, yeah, that'd be per year, that'd be awesome. I'm not getting that, but that's, that's a pretty substantial jump in the price of my home.
Sure. And there's another meeting that happens in the spring for that, and that's, that's the evaluation hearing. I'm not calling it the right thing, somebody help me with the name of it.
Equalization.
The Board of Equalization. That would be where you'd talk about what the value of your property is, and you certainly can go to the county right now and go to the assessing office and start that process, but this is the meeting to talk about what your taxes are going to be used for. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak about the taxes for the city? Then...
Robert Moorel, and I reside in Wilmer, and I would just want to note, my whole percent change was 13.8, and I thought that was a little much, and I was just wondering how, how all that worked out, that's why it came.
Yeah, Steve will, Steve will show you with the city portion, and again, that's the city, the county, and the school district, and also any special taxing jurisdictions are also included in that.
Your value go up? At $20,000 roughly. This 120 will actually be about 60, and a lot of that is due to the increase in the value.
Okay. So again, you had a change in valuation of your property, is that right, Steve? So you had a change in valuation of your property, and to get the valuation, what the, what the assessors do is they take a look at similar properties, and they look across the entire city. In our case, it's the city. They look across the entire city, they look at properties that have sold, and a lot of properties have sold in Wilmer in the last few years, and that's change in the valuation mix. And so, again, the Board of Equalization hearing, if you have a, if you're contesting the amount of your property value, then that would be at the Board of Equalization is where that would happen.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Okens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in both those instances, the values of the properties did go up, which would attribute to some of the increase. And again, the amount that would have shown on their notice will be reduced if the council passes the recommendations that are coming from the finance committee, and that would reduce that portion for the city approximately in half. The, if I could go back to a slide and, and show the proposed levy, the increased value not only for maybe property shifting as far as values go due to market conditions, but the increased growth to the community and the industrial growth and the commercial growth was able to generate about $379,000 of the total increase, which would have been no effect on the property taxes. And so the two actions, after you close the meeting tonight, would be if the council accepts the recommendations from the finance committee, would be to set the levy based on those resolutions that are also included in your packet.
Correct. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak to the question? And again, so the valuation would go down if the, if the property value stayed the same. In the two situations we're talking about, the property values went up, so they still may see more than a 50% valuation, correct?
If the property values of the mentioned property would stay the same, it would go up slightly by those examples that we had in our presentation.
Right. Additional questions from the public? Seeing in hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
I will make a motion to adopt the 2020 tax levy at a total of $5,776,821.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution for the tax levy at $5,776,821. Any discussion? Councilmember Mesky.
Well, first, I think it's, it's unfortunate, but it is how our process worked, that we sent out notifications that the city portion will probably be cut in half. I think that's going to be good news eventually. I'm just curious, can we, I know it's not germane necessarily to what we're talking about here, but since a lot of the questions came up, do we have a tentative date for that Board of Equalization meeting set up that, at this?
It always happens in the spring, I think it's April, isn't it?
Typically, yes. It is, has been in April. We will get notification from the county assessor's office here in January, late January, February, and then we will set that, that date at that time.
And then the mayor pro tem runs that meeting, as you're well aware, and then, you know, they hear the valuation questions that come up at that time.
Now, just for people that are maybe concerned about it, to express it in an interim to the county, but ultimately, they look for that meeting in April.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. So are there any, Councilmember Paulman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to, just as a segue from what Councilman Mesky was talking about, I do think it's important to denote for our public and just general understanding, because I've had some questions regarding a raise in the levy, and people have also noticed raise, raises in what their taxes will be. And I think it's, it's complicated, first of all, but I think it is important to, to get that truth out there, that our, our property taxes are made up of more than just city taxes, and such is the case when assessing is done. And we're very cognizant of this now, but even if the, if our operating levy had not raised at all, if an assessed property value raises, then the taxable value of it is also raised, so the taxes on that property would raise whether or not there was any raise in our operating levy. Secondly, I do appreciate the work done by the finance committee, the chair, our finance director, Mr. Okens, but also the council as a whole at the various meetings that we had. Again, cognizant of the various changes that we're experiencing in our community, but also in the county and in the state. We're aware of, of additional taxes and charges and fees and whatnot and all of those, and hard work was done to, to, again, reduce that initially proposed levy and essentially cut that in half on the city's portion, and also to remove that gas franchise and by moving around other items, essentially limit the amount of raises and limit the, the overall tax impact that that's going to have on our community. And I, I think that's important, and I appreciate the work done by those involved. Thank you.
The, the finance committee actually raised the levy from what the mayor had proposed and then reduced it back to what the mayor had proposed. So it wasn't cut by the finance committee, it was brought back to what the mayor had proposed, the dollar amount. I believe this is the truth.
The finance committee raised it, correct? And then I believe it was suggested or recommended that it be brought back down?
Correct.
Correct.
Additional comments or questions? I have to make one last plea. You have $485,000 that you, that you have not allocated the dollars for yet. I know that I was not at the first meeting that you guys had, but I was at the second one, and I know that there was some discussion that happened around that. But I'm going to make one last plea for the barn theater. That was a project that I had met with the barn theater board at their request to talk about the needs that they have there. And having a good community theater is something that really brings value to a community and really brings a lot of good things that happen. And I, I mean, you have, I mean, you still would have $470,000, and to my knowledge, in 20 years, working with city budgets, we've never done that before, have $470,000 unallocated dollars? If you put, if you took the $15,000 and put that in there, you would still have that, those dollars. I know at the meeting, there was some question as to whether we should take and put the money towards the auditorium and other, other things. One of the things that was said at the meeting is that we haven't approved any other community funds, but last year we gave additional dollars to celebrate the light of the world. And so I would, I would ask that the barn theater be included in the funding request. And, you know, I understand that a budget is just simply that. It can be worked and it can be moved back and forth, it can be adjusted however you choose to do it, but, you know, the levy is back to what I had proposed to the council. I would have made these comments at the meeting, I raised my hand a couple times, but wasn't called on. So, and removing the gas franchise fee as well is something that you certainly have the choice of doing, and I like the plan that you guys have in place for that, of talking about that in the future and bringing a plan on how you're going to use those dollars. I think that's very, very forward-thinking. I think that's a very good way to do it, so I'm glad that we're going to do that. But I would just respectfully request that the barn theater dollars be added back in.
I have a motion and a second on the tax levy.
I understand that. We're at the discussion point in the agenda. Councilmember Fagerly.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought at the committee meeting, the barn was talked to, and they were told to check with the HRA for some grants. I mean, they're a nonprofit, but they're in business, they can do some fundraising, they can ask for donations, they can raise their ticket prices. They're important, but there's a lot of good organizations out there that could use money. I mean, we could even use money. So, I would say, no.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, additional conversations. So, the motion that has been presented is to adopt the 2020 tax levy in the amount of $5,776,821. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. The next resolution is to adopt the 2020 budget for the City of Wilmer at $6,410,419.
I will make a motion to adopt the proposed 2020 budget as recommended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you for attending. You can stick around for the rest of our meeting if you like, but the truth in taxation passed the way it was presented. So, you will see a reduction in the levy of 1 mil rate, so which is about $147,000. Okay, next we have Public Works Public Safety Report of November 20th. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Public Works Public Safety Committee met Wednesday, November 20th, at the City Office Building at 5:15. Councilmembers present were Plowman, Osmus, Nelson, and Alvarado. Others present were our City Administrator Grommets, our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, Park and Rec Director Baumgarten, and our Administrative Assistant Dobosk. The meeting was called to order at 5:15. Our first item that we had to discuss was a change order on Project 1901B. Project 1901B included the reconstruction of 13th and 14th Streets southeast from Service Road to the south end, and 15th and 16th Streets southeast from Becker Avenue to the south end. Change Order Number Three, in the amount of $26,621, resulted from the utility conflicts on two of the catch basins in this area, replacing storm pipe because the existing storm pipe was brittle, and the two storm manholes also needed to be repaired. This change order is within the project's budget contingencies, which were $223,213. The original contracted amount was for $2,232,137.65. And the addition of the three change orders, this is now the third, have amounted to $45,846. So, this amount of $26,621 is still within the parameters set forth, and I will enter the motion to accept this change order now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Change Order Number One, in the amount of $33,819.12 for Project 1903B. Discussion, Councilmember Plowman.
I believe that dollar amount was incorrect. Either your dollar amount was incorrect or mine. The dollar amount I have is $26,621.
I was on the wrong one. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, just verifying.
$26,621.
Yes, just verifying.
I read the wrong line. Sorry.
Not a problem. Just clarifying that.
Perfect. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Now, this next change order, 1903-B, and that is the overlay of Civic Center Drive northeast from Highway 71 to County Road 9 northeast. Change Order Number One is in the amount of $33,819.12, and it resulted from additional bituminous required and additional curb and sidewalk removal. The change order is within the project's budget contingencies of $54,411. The original contract amount is $680,138, and so, again, this change order will be in the amount of $33,819.12, and I will make a motion to authorize the change order now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Change Order in the amount of $33,819.12 for additional bituminous and additional curb and sidewalk removal. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Calvin. Mayor Calvin, rather. Our next action item was regarding the Eagle Lake Sewer Repair and Construction Bids. The Eagle Lake Sanitary Sewer District was acquired from the City of Kedonai County in 2018. With the acquisition, the city is responsible for all repairs of the system. A 365-foot portion of 10-inch PVC sanitary sewer main in the Eagle Lake District has severe SAG and is impeding the flow. It is a continued maintenance problem with constant monitoring and cleaning of the line to ensure service through the pipe. Professional services were contracted a few months back with Bolton &amp; Mink for the survey, design, and permitting of the project. Construction quotes were open November 22nd with three received, and the apparent low bid was from Crow River Construction in the amount of $76,945. The total project cost of engineering and construction is $107,245, and will be funded from the overall $200,000 amount in the Eagle Lake Sewer District System Improvement, CIP. And I will make a motion to accept the low bid from Crow River Construction in the amount of $76,945, and enter that now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a bid from Crow River Construction, the amount of $76,945 for repairs to the Eagle Lake Sewer District System. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Then, just on to a couple items that we have for information, some good discussions that we had. The first one was regarding the trap range. Staff brought forth to the committee some information about the local trap range and how it is currently being utilized by various school organizations and local clubs. What is currently being discussed is whether or not there is the potential for a city partnership with the Trap Range Club in terms of participation, the organization, and implementation of further trap activities, possible expansion that may continue down the road, and a relationship that we may have between the trap team and the city. So, we decided to send that back and let those discussions further evolve into maybe a more comprehensive plan of what that programming might look like, and what financial obligations would come to the city, as well as what opportunities exist in the various clubs. And the final item after that was kind of pertinent to this week, because we just kind of received a couple major snowfalls last week, but it was regarding our snow emergency plans within the city. We talked to our city engineer, as well as our Public Works professionals out at the building regarding the various practices for plowing and the handleings of citywide snow events and whatnot. The nature of our discussion was and revolved around what a potential snow emergency plan could look like regarding the entire city, and just how that could be crafted, and what types of information would be needed. Also, various technologies that would allow the city and the community to interface with all the residents in the city, getting proper notices out there and whatnot. We're still gathering information, but I believe that we're kind of narrowing the scope of the discussion for what that comprehensive plan would look like. And we did discuss, you know, the fact that we are now into winter, that we would have liked to have something developed before snow came, but you never can predict the weather. But we do know it's going to be cold, and it's likely going to continue to snow. And so, we are discussing the idea of potentially having something back to the Public Works Committee in a plan that may have kind of a 2020 start for implementation. But that will be one of our forthcoming topics that we will have to discuss at a very near-to-future meeting. So, with that, our meeting was adjourned at 6:45, and I will move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee Report of November 20th. Discussion, Councilmember Osmus.
On item number six about the snow emergency discussion, I just wanted to note that I did talk to the Public Works Director today, and in just the east and west part of the core of the city, kind of from Highway 12 down to 19th Avenue, there was over 600 cars on the street that the plows had to work around. And, you know, part of our discussion was about public outreach and education, and we knew this storm was coming days ahead of time. And when you know that, I mean, all we can do is encourage people to not park your cars on the street, leave them in the driveway. If you're a rental property, you're renting, and if you're the renter, let the people park in the driveway until the plows can go by, let them do their jobs, so that the streets can maintain a width that a fire truck and an ambulance and cars can get through.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Addressing on a personal note, I had family from out of town. I didn't have room for them in my driveway. So, I think, yes, there were cars on the street. I think some of those would add to the number just because of the time of the year, or the holiday. Yes, I agree with what Julie had to say, we have to encourage them to use their driveways, get off the street, let the Public Works people do their job. It's a safety issue, and I agree with Councilmember Osmus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Additional comments? Councilmember Fagerly.
On that same issue, if you drive on Southwest Fifth Street, and there's an entrance going into Skylark, and then to the right or west is 16th Avenue, you've got two apartments, north and south, and then you've got a dentist off a straight ahead. I've never seen vehicles park in that cul-de-sac. It's not a very big cul-de-sac. There were six on the north side, two were on the yard of the apartment complex, and there was four on the south side. And they've all been there, I mean, they were all snow-covered. So, I don't know if the police does not drive by and ticket them or what, but they've been there for well over 48 hours. And there's no way you can get a snowplow in there. I'm surprised we didn't have an accident running into a vehicle. I would suggest that the police or Public Works look at that area, because it's pretty treacherous, because the apartment complex to the north was purchased recently, and it used to be senior citizens housing. Now, it's younger people, and they have two, three vehicles per apartment, or before it was one or none. So, there's more vehicles there. It's definitely an issue.
Chief, can we make sure we have somebody swing by and take a look at that spot tomorrow or tonight yet? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think these reasons are very germane as to why this is a pretty important topic. Taking into account, yes, not only do we have a Public Works crew that's trying to work efficiently and safely to the benefit of our entire community by trying to get these roads cleaned up and passable and safe, but then we also have concerns about parking and certain incidents and certain situations where people don't have many options when it comes to parking. So, that's also another consideration. And then also, there's the enforcement aspect of it. And so, when you take all three of those different topics and throw those into the conversation, we think that it would benefit the city and all of its residents if we come up with a more comprehensive plan that not only let us know, but it would also let our Public Works crews know, and it would also let our law enforcement know exactly what's going to happen, and the biggest part, all of the residents, let all the residents know what's going to happen during these snowfall events. And I think that will go a long ways to eliminate a lot of confusion and create much more efficiencies. So, that is what we are aiming to do.
Additional discussion. On Kedonai today, they talked about the issue that we had this spring. I think they talked about it on the news at noon, and about how Second Street southeast, how we ended up having the temporary no parking, and then we pulled that off, and then we talked about it. So, I'm glad to hear that you guys are going to be looking at this. And are you talking 2020, so fall of 2020, or are you talking about spring of 2020? Because I know we talked about it at the council meeting a number of months ago, and now I see it on the agenda, so.
Yes, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for those comments. No, we would be looking to hopefully implement something as soon as possible, but we also know that if it's going to be a well-written, well-documented, comprehensive plan, that it's also nice to implement those things on a date that has some sort of impact. And we were kind of thinking that maybe like January 1st could be a potential date. And not...
You're not talking about a new ordinance then?
Well, I would have to defer to either our City Administrator regarding the legal ramifications of exactly how we would write this up.
Yeah, because an ordinance would take longer than one meeting to get. I mean, you have to do the publications and all that. I mean, that's some of what we talked about a few months ago, of how the time was ticking. So, yeah. We can do it by policy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I think, you know, as we get further into the discussion of how to, or select the mechanism that you wish to use for your snow emergency, because there's lots of options out there, that then we would look at, review our current policies and ordinances, and see if we have everything in place. And if not, then we would have to, you know, amend an ordinance or something like that to allow that to happen. So, as we get further into it, we'll know more as to the timetable. So, at this point in time, we're just getting the idea, the concept laid out, and we'll respond back to Public Works with what the plan would be, and what's needed, and what's the timetable could possibly be. But, right, if we have the enforcement already in place, we set the policy, it can go into effect rather fast. If you need an ordinance, it's going to take longer than that.
Perfect. Sounds great. Okay, I'm glad to see you working on it. I appreciate that. Any additional comments for the Public Works Safety Committee? And as Councilmember Fagerly knows, I started working for the city in 2000, and so, that's about 20 years ago. And the first winter I was here, we talked about doing something. And so, it's very encouraging to hear that you're actually moving the needle. So, good work. So, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And another issue on the trap range, since, I mean, they talked about it briefly at the Park and Rec, but the college does have a trap team, and I would check with them and see if they would partner. And they do have a carpentry class that looks for projects to do in the spring, and they might help remodel the building that's out there by the waste treatment plant. So, it saves some money that way, partnership.
Could be a great partnership. Yeah, I trust our Park and Rec Directors going back, and it sounded like they have a well-run organization. We're pretty confident in the individual that they have leading their organization. He's pretty resourceful.
But it's ours that I'm worried about.
Well, and noted, yes.
Are we ready to file the minutes? Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, the motion does carry. Next, we have Finance Committee Report of November 21st. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Finance Committee Full-Council Meeting was... Finance Committee full city council meeting was held at 5:15 on Thursday, November 21st at the City Office Building. Present were Councilmembers Nelson, Fagerly, Plowman, and Osmus. Others present were Mayor Marv Kelvin, Councilmembers Mesky, Alvarado, Davis, City Administrator Grommets, Finance Director Okens, Fire Chief Hanson, and Airport Manager Eric Rundigan. After the meeting was called to order, there were no public comments, and we do have one item left that needs a resolution, and that was Dover Township Fire Contract. Dover Township is under an annual contract with Wilmer Fire Department Services, which expires December 31st, 2019. A statewide formula has been used for decades to calculate the township cost-sharing proposal. The formula is based off from the prior year information, including market values in the township, the number of fire calls, and the number of firefighters responding. A five-year history of the annual contract amounts was provided. It was noted that the proposed 2020 contract in the amount of $20,838.08 is down from previous years since there was no firefighter hours accumulated in 2018. There was a motion and a second to introduce a resolution to execute the 2020 Fire Protection Agreement for Dover Township in the amount of $20,838.08, and I will enter that now.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve a fire protection agreement with Dover Township in the amount of $20,838.8. Discussion. I just have one point to remind the council of, when we had our ISO rating change, one of the things was is that we provide fire protection to the townships, and they made the township and the city fire protection ratings the same. And so remember that this $20,838 that you're getting is, you know, you're getting $20,000, $21,000, that's costing you also because, you know, your ISO rating went, became worse. And so just keep that in mind when you're... And this is a roll call. All those in favor of the motion? I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. The next item was brought to us to adjust an ag lease, and that item was actually tabled. We received information regarding changing the lease as it relates to some changes with the Wilmer Y project. Staff requested an additional review as it was being presented, and it was the consensus of the committee that this matter be tabled until the next Finance Committee meeting so that more detailed information could be provided and reviewed. Item number four was a discussion item for the council with detailed information on the tax levy and the 2020 budget. There is a lengthy discussion that took place. All council members, we had a roundtable discussion and an opportunity for everyone to participate. I'm not going to read through those as Finance Director Okens went through a lot of those on the PowerPoint presentation. We did discuss the franchise fee and needing to take a look at that again in the future. We also discussed the undesignated balance of $800,000 and the amount that is left, and that will be coming back to a Finance Committee meeting shortly. Capital improvement program was also discussed briefly. And we have taken action on the tax levy certification and also action on the budget, the balancing that went through the process. And so that was the end of our meeting, and we adjourned at 6:41. And I would make a motion to enter the minutes now.
Second.
Motion made in second to file the minutes of the Finance Committee for November 21st. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next is Community Development Committee Report for November 25th. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, November 25th, 5:15 at City Hall. Present was myself, Davis, Mesky, and Osmus. Dr. Ramstead and Sarah Swedberg, our planner was there, and Brian Grommet, the city administrator, came shortly after we started. Item one was called, or item two was public comment, there was no one there to speak to us. Item three, we discussed the Opportunity Zone incentive proposals. We discussed an array of incentives for the Opportunity Zone as a five-year pilot program to get a feeling for the committee's tolerance level for the proposed incentives and to seek input and permission to continue development of the incentive ideas. A number of suggestions were made, and staff were asked to try to incorporate the feedback. A motion was made and seconded to direct staff to continue exploring and developing the proposed Opportunity Zone incentive options. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to direct staff to consider, to continue exploring and developing the proposed Opportunity Zone incentive programs. Councilmember Mesky. Well, it has on here for informational purposes only. Was that because it was just the direction of the committee to have them do more work on it, or does it, do we need to vote on it here?
We directed them to continue to work on it. Yep. Because this, we can have different options, three-year, two-year, three-year, five-year. This is a statewide program. It's similar to what the old, this old house program was for 10 years, but this is for commercial, and it'll be from First Street to Southwest Seventh Street, Trot Avenue to the railroad tracks. So just trying to get a feel of what can be done in town, so.
I'm glad, I'm glad to give you an opportunity to talk more about the program, because I think it's awesome, too. My point was just a procedural question, because on the minutes here, it says it was for informational purposes only at this point. But do we need to have it as a motion at the council meeting? When I read the minute, when I read the minutes, it was confusing to me, so I was going to go with the flow of however it happened. If there was a motion that was made, I was going to entertain it. If it went for information, that was fine as well. We have a formal motion that's been made at this time, and so if we want to act on the motion, we can. Or if you want to rescind the motion for informational only, doesn't make any difference.
Well, the committee was for it, but I guess we'd like to hear if the rest of the councils were, too.
Sure. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion from the council as to being favorable for this type of a project? Is that the way to put it?
It's fine.
Let me rephrase it. Is there opposition to it? That's easier to say if there's opposition, because otherwise, everybody's going to stalk that report, I would guess. This is a good program. Okay. Sheen and hearing, none, all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Councilmember...
And there be no further business? We adjourned at 6:15, and I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second to file the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of filing the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next is a resolution designating polling places for the elections in 2020. Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, per Minnesota Statute 204B dot point one six subdivision one, which was changed in the 2017 legislative session, by December 31st of each year, the governing body of each municipality and of each county with precincts in unorganized territory must designate by ordinance or resolution a polling place for each election precinct. The polling places designated in the ordinance or resolution are the polling places for the following calendar year unless a change is made. And the various polling places are indicated in the resolution that's included in your packet, and it is staff's recommendation that council approve the resolution as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the polling places for the 2020 election. Discussion. Roll call.
Question.
Councilmember Osmus. I'm sorry, Councilmember Alvarado.
And second ward, fourth precinct, that says mail ballot, what does that mean?
That's the, that's the airport? Correct?
Yeah, there's, there's no households out there, and it's a designated precinct, so they just say it's a mail ballot, because we don't have anyone there to vote.
Okay, thank you. I didn't understand that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's been that way for a number of years. I can't remember. But it's very confusing.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of state application and permit for one-day to four-day temporary liquor license. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my office recently received an application request for, from the Lyons District 5M4, doing business as Elbow Lake Lyons Club, to plant, to sell alcohol during the Lyons District Midwinter Convention on January 24th and 25th, 2020, at the Wilmer Holiday Inn and Conference Center. State application and permit for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license is required to distribute or consume alcohol during this event, and it's staff's recommendation that council approve the permit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve a state application for the Elbow Lake Lyons for a, for their conference here. Again, this is, takes a simple motion to pass, but it is a roll call because it is alcohol. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, that motion passes. Next, we have council member announcements. I'll start with Councilmember Mesky and try not to forget Fagerly again. Councilmember Mesky. Councilmember Schwantes.
Get out and enjoy, celebrate the lights. I hear it's fantastic.
Councilmember Davis?
Got nothing.
Councilmember Alvarado?
I got nothing.
Councilmember?
I'll pass.
This is a red-letter day, folks. Mark. Exactly. Councilmember Osmus? You're going to have something, I know you are.
I usually wait for him to take my thunder, but I, pass. I've missed opportunity.
Councilmember Nelson?
Pass.
Councilmember Fagerly?
We are not having a community development meeting on Monday, so.
Okay, sounds good. Next, we'll have the public announcements of Public Works Safety.
Public Works, Public Safety will meet this Wednesday, the 4th, at the City Office, 5:15.
Finance.
Finance will meet Thursday, December 5th, at 5:15.
Labor. December 9th, 6:15, City Hall. With that, nothing else to come before the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.